Okay, welcome everyone, as well as those joining us from home. This is a work session for the Pecoson City Council for Monday, October 27th. And the discussion this evening is in traffic calming. This is kind of a follow-up from a work session we had earlier to talk about a couple of intersections and then to kind of start a yearly or bi-yearly dialogue, I'm not sure whether we decided yearly or bi-yearly, on traffic situations within the city and to, with the overall goal of improving the safety of the streets for residents and the like. So, I would like to proceed. I see two people here that are Ellen and Tom, and we appreciate y'all being here. And Rod, Chief Holloway, appreciate y'all coming in this evening to brief us on what the thought process of the city staff is. So however y'all would like to proceed.
Okay. We were tasked with looking at several specific traffic concerns. And while we were at it, we also did some research into VDOT traffic calming measures. So if you'll bear with us, our first thing we'd like to do is show a VDOT, a five-minute VDOT traffic video which kind of explains the process and the various options that people who live on VDOT-owned roads would go through if they feel that speeding on local streets was an issue. So, okay. Get the lights.
In recent years, community concerns about traffic on residential streets have increased. While enforcement is the traditional means of addressing speeding problems, this solution might not be practical for all communities. To address traffic problems in neighborhoods, the Virginia DOT offers five residential traffic management tools. The first two tools are statewide policies that have addressed the problem of cut-through traffic and through-truck traffic since the late 1980s. The third and fourth tools are watch-for-children signs and $200 fines for speeding in residential areas. These options were added in the late 1990s. In 1997, VDOT developed a fifth tool, the Residential Traffic Calming Guide, deals specifically with speeding on local streets. Let's look at traffic calming in more detail. The guidelines were tested in six counties in a two-year pilot program. They were approved for statewide use in 2001 and updated in 2002. To be eligible for traffic calming consideration, three requirements must be met. The posted speed limit is not over 25 miles per hour. The roadway is a two-lane residential street. And the study documents a speeding problem. These guidelines are for existing local residential streets. They are not designed for arterial routes that provide a high-speed, high-volume road for travel between two points. Traffic calming can include physical and non-physical measures to reduce speeding on streets. There are seven physical measures. A speed hump is an elongated hump in the road. The hump is effective in slowing traffic but also slows emergency vehicles. Chokers are built at the curbside to reduce the width of the travel lane. The narrowing of the road reduces speed and provides parking protection. However, chokers can cause drainage problems depending on the location. Raised crosswalks can be used where pedestrian safety is a concern. Raised crosswalks can reduce speeds and may also slow emergency vehicles. A traffic circle is an elevated area in the middle of an intersection. It slows speeders by moving vehicles in a circular, counterclockwise traffic pattern. Approaching vehicles yield to traffic in the circle, reducing left-turn accidents and speeding. However, the circles slow emergency vehicles and may reduce the number of available parking spaces on the street. A raised median island reduces speed by narrowing the lane. The islands can cause drainage problems. A crosswalk refuge gives pedestrians a safe haven when crossing the street. It reduces speed by narrowing the lane and consists of a raised median in the middle of the road with a cut for the crosswalk. Chicanes are built at curbside on divided roads to create a 45-degree bend in a formerly straight street. The bend forces drivers to negotiate the street in snake-like fashion. Chicanes reduce speeds, provide parking protection, and shorten pedestrian crossing distances. Thus costly options can include pavement markings to create the perception of a narrowed street. The cost of a traffic calming measure ranges from a few hundred dollars to several thousand dollars. The local jurisdiction and VDOT can share the funding for traffic calming measures. In any traffic calming decision, community awareness and education are important first steps to reach a consensus in the neighborhood. Prior to making traffic calming a reality in the neighborhood, two things must happen. First, a resolution in support of the measure must be passed by the local jurisdiction. Second, a petition in support of the measure must be signed by 75% of the neighborhood. The county, VDOT, and the community then work together to determine the appropriate traffic calming measure that best suits the neighborhood's unique needs. Before traffic calming measures can be implemented, a public meeting should be held to ensure that the community has reached a consensus. The goal of VDOT's residential traffic calming program is to provide communities with options to improve safety and reduce speeding.
And just a couple of notes before we go on. These would not be appropriate measures for arterial roads, so Little Florida, Pecoson Avenue, Withcreek Road obviously wouldn't be considered appropriate by VDOT for these measures. The other thing is, if there, if a measure's installed and residents really don't like it, if it doesn't do what they think it's going to do, if this is a VDOT-owned road, you also need 75% of the residents to agree to take it out. What happened in Arlington County is they did a very comprehensive traffic calming program up there and they didn't get a lot of neighborhood buy-in to begin with. So they really had a big issue with people upset that they weren't consulted before the traffic measure was put in and they had to remove and kind of rethink their process in places. So, when we first found out about the traffic issues or were tasked to do this, Tom went ahead and made some initial changes. So, I'm going to get him to talk about those first.
Well, one of the major concerns was the intersection right there at Cedar Road and Little Florida Road, people running that stop sign. So actually, you know Percy did a lot, and that's the, you know, the police department did some work there to, you know, kind of give us some traffic data, which he is actually not here tonight. But what we really found out was most of the issue was actually coming from the north side, coming north, turning on to Little Florida instead of south, which is like coming from municipal drive. But there was a lot of issues right there of people coming up there right at, you know, going, you know, heading south, turning right or left on to Little Florida, mainly turning right. So we actually, one of the suggestions was, was go ahead and widen that intersection a little bit there. And so what we did, city staff, I had a crew, we went down and we actually widened that little area out there by the stop sign. And I tell you, we had a lot of, you know, citizens say what a great job we did down there and that it actually really helped them turning onto, it helped them stay in the lane when they turned actually out onto Little Florida Road instead of having to go out farther, you know, straight ahead and kind of get into that other lane. And an additional thing we did down there, towards Withcreek Road, we actually took down two large pine trees that were kind of in a corner there, right before Far Street, near the pump station there, that actually blocked visibility. And by removing those two trees, you know, in the city's right-of-way there, actually in somebody's yardway, but it was actually most in the city's right-of-way, that really helped the visibility as well. So those are two things that we did there that I think, you know, has really made a big difference. And the police department actually said that, you know, they felt like that would help that issue quite a bit. So, you know, those are a couple of things that we did, that we're on kind of a list of things. And, you know, I'll go to one other thing. One other thing was over off of Odd Road. And one of the questions, you know, about people parking there right beside Kids Island, along that area right through there. And this has been a long-time thing that we've been, we're going to do eventually, you know, through Parks and Recreation. We're actually going to extend that fence line from Kids Island down along that roadway there. And this is something that's been in the planning stage and a funding, you know, I've been trying to save the funds to be able to do that for quite a while. We've actually made a lot of improvements to Kids Island there. And one of the main concerns there for us when Public Works took over that was to make that a safer area for the children to play in. So, you know, we've put a fence up there right along Kids Island. I stopped because of funding. And now I'm actually, this year, I'm planning on doing that, or the city is planning on doing that, somewhere in December, if everything works well, to actually put a fence line along down through there to keep the kids on the, you know, on the ballfield area and the playground area and not roaming into the street.
Down toward the driveway into the school?
Yes, sir. We're going to put it all the way, we're going to actually wrap it all the way around. And I'm going to put a gate door going into that section, right there where the kids go into that, where we have vehicular traffic going in there. And it's mainly, mainly the vehicular traffic that we're speaking of is actually parks, you know, personnel going in there to maintain those fields. But, you know, during certain seasons, some parents and some, some coaches and stuff are allowed to go in a certain area there. But we're going to take care of that, we're going to install that fence line. And after we do the fence line in that area, we are going to put the no parking signs up along. There won't be room to park anyway safely, so there will be no parking signs along that area as well. So that will take care of that problem. So there's two issues there that I think we've, you know, kind of taken care of. And if we get input from y'all about doing something else, we'll certainly look into that and do, come back to you on that. One other thing we've done that was kind of on like a list of things, there was a dead-end street sign. West Carriage Hill had no dead-end street sign down there or no outlet sign. And, you know, we went down and took a look at it and we decided just to go ahead and put that in down there to keep, you know, people from turning down there, you know, and clogging up the end of that street with really no turn around. So we've taken care of that as well. So those are the three things, main things that, you know, I wanted to bring to everyone's attention before Ellen continued on.
On Cedar, going north, I rode down there yesterday and looked. The telephone pole, you've got a stop sign, a head sign, then you've got a stop sign. In between the stop sign, a head sign, and the stop sign are three telephone light poles, utility poles, whatever you call them. And you can see the stop-ahead sign really, really well. But driving down the right-hand lane toward Little Florida, it pretty well blocks that stop sign. I'd not noticed that before until yesterday.
I will certainly take a look.
And I don't know what we can do about that. We may can move the poles, we may not, I don't know. I don't even know if it'd be necessary.
We won't be able to move the Virginia power poles. But what I may be able to do, if I'll go down and take a look at that and I will get back with you, if that is a visibility issue there, I'll put another sign up there saying stop-ahead, or I'll put something up to take care of that issue.
I don't know how much that detracts, and I've not noticed it before, but it was pointed out to me and it does block it.
Before Ellen continues, I'll just take a minute to commend Tom in the way this city works. I asked Tom to go and look at expanding that pavement. Tell me if you thought it was feasible and give me a ballpark cost of what it might cost. And the next day, he sent me a text saying finished.
Yes. We noticed that as well and we, how great that was, because we just had had the work session and the next thing you know, we've got more pavement down. And I do think it made a difference. I do travel through there intermittently and I noticed the difference in the turn radius right away.
It makes a big difference. And I really didn't realize how much a difference it would make myself until we actually went out there and I measured it, we drew a radius there, and we actually pulled the vehicle there to see. And it definitely keeps you from pulling out into the other lane of traffic. So it did help and, you know, anything to do with safety, we try to get in there and do it, you know, ASAP. And I think that was, that was a big concern and I think it did a world of good.
Thank you for that.
Tom wears a lot of hats and you wear them well. Thank you for what you do. I've been talking to him about, you know, bulk drop-off and trash pickup and recycling and it all.
As we, and you brought up an interesting point, and something else that I've been noticing as a, as a parent and the school administration has changed a little bit. And I will say that the student drop-off at the high school has, there used to be, I think, and I'm not going to say that they have caused this, because I think it was more dangerous in the parking lot than what it needed to be. And so they have controlled the parking lot by the schools. So kudos to them. I think the safety issue associated with that has exasperated itself out onto the public street in that there's a lot more children being dropped off at the primary school, back behind the, behind, in the Parks and Rec administration to cut through the woods. And one thing I would like you to take a look at, because you'd already talked about the fence, is some type of, it doesn't have to be a hardscape sidewalk, but some type of walking surface, maybe on the inside of that fence, to separate those students from a safe way to school. As you do, as you do the fence, if you would take a look at that, you can go monitor that for a while. It's, it's an interesting phenomenon. I'd only know that if I had a high schooler to drop off. But I've noticed that there's kids coming from every direction on Odd Road, so.
And I may give you a call if that's okay on that.
We'll go, we can go, we can go have a cup of coffee there on the side of the road and watch it one day if you'd like.
Well, that'll work. I just want to make sure I know exactly what you're talking about.
We'll take the chief, he can mark, he can have some flashing lights there for us, keep us out of the fray.
Actually, before you go ahead, can I ask you a question about the video you just showed? The, two, two things. One, can you share the URL for the video so that I can, the site, the address, so that I can?
It's actually in the memo you received.
Oh, I missed it. Okay, then I'll find it.
Let me double-check that.
Okay, great, thanks. And then the other one was, one of the things that mentioned in it was that if citizens wanted it changed, 75% of the neighborhood had to buy in.
I like that.
That was for counties, not cities?
That's for VDOT-maintained road, but I think we all, as a staff, recommended the same thing for the city road for two reasons. One, we're supposed to maintain VDOT standards. And second of all, like I said, there have been localities who have just on their own gone and installed something and met with a lot of opposition after the fact from the neighborhoods.
Okay. So my question then is what constitutes the neighbors or the neighborhood? For example, I live on Bunting Lane. Would my neighborhood include Floyd and Holly and Church and Ridge, or is my neighborhood Bunting Lane?
VDOT, that Traffic Calming Guide has very specific procedures, I think, but I'm not sure. It would be anybody that would have to drive by that location to get in and out.
So all the streets you said, like Holly, all those streets?
But Church and Ridge wouldn't, I mean Church and Lodge don't have to.
No, they can go out the other way. But every other street off of that Floyd, Holly, hump.
When we, when we did this in Spasylvania, part of it was actually our transportation planner would go out and determine which streets regularly use that roadway, and that's how they define the neighborhood. So we'd probably do the same thing if it wasn't obvious.
Right. And the other thing the video kind of touched on very lightly but didn't get into detail is they ask you to do a speed survey and a volume survey to make sure you're really having, it's, people are really exceeding the speed at a pretty high rate. Typically, a speed limit is set at eighty, at the 85 percentile. So 85% of the drivers should be driving at that speed or less than that speed. So if you go out, sometimes neighbors think that that's too, what people driving the speed limit are actually going too fast. So if this were a VDOT road, you'd have to go through that, that survey.
Right. But we had that machine, they've done that for us before, I'm familiar with that.
We did that on Brown's neck.
VDOT, please. I'm assuming you have to go by their.
Thank you, yes.
I think one of the, I think one of the main things in that video that they probably didn't emphasize enough, they said it twice for two different common things, is it's going to slow down emergency vehicles. And it's also going to damage them. And we can't afford school buses now, it's going to damage them. Because the heavier the vehicle, I don't care how slight the bump is, you're wearing out that front end.
And one other point I want to make in, in like a Public Works point of view would be my snow removal equipment. You know, we struggle now with what we have to keep up. And I think, don't get me wrong, I think we do a great job with what we have. And I think we, we do a good job by putting some roadblocks up, and I call that a roadblock for me, would be almost devastating to keep these roads clean and clear, you know, for the general safety of the traveling public. So I just wanted to make that. And also, one other point I'd like to make is, all of our streets are funded by VDOT money. So I'm feeling sure that we would have to go by these guidelines. Every dime that I, that the city spends, basically every dime comes from VDOT. So we have to go by VDOT standards when we're dealing with these roads. And, you know, VDOT doesn't come in here and give me guidelines on which street to pave or which, and we come in and do a lot of the work, you know, pothole patching and stuff ourselves, because I think we'd do a better job. So, but I just wanted to make that point, because a lot of people don't realize that and understand that that's where our funding comes from.
Ellen? I have one question.
Sure.
In the video, they did not discuss rumble strips at all.
Correct.
And that's, that's a method of drawing people's attention to their speed.
Correct.
It's not as destabilizing and not as hard on vehicles, but it still draws your attention to speed. Is there?
There are standards for rumble strips. They're typically not used in neighborhoods because of the noise they produce. They're, they're actually mentioned in here, the Monticello Long Hill intersection in James City County. When Monticello Avenue was first extended to Long Hill Road, what happened is they had a couple horrific car accidents with people not realizing that that was a stoplight, that the traffic patterns had changed. And they installed rumble strips that ran perpendicular to the center line of the road quite effectively in that area to raise driver awareness and to slow people down. So that's a good thing to do if you have a situation where you have a dangerous intersection, if you have a school zone that perhaps people are ignoring. But it's probably more appropriate on the arterial roads than inside the neighborhoods, which is what the traffic calming measures are for. They use the rumble strips that run perpendicular to really get the driver's attention up to those type of hazards. And they use the ones that parallel the center line of the road on interstates to keep people who are, might be falling asleep from going off the road. So there are standards for those. And agreed with Tom on the VDOT standards, the nice thing about having the VDOT standards is they have a wealth of information. Of course, the downside is they have a wealth of information, sometimes it's difficult finding the answers to questions. But the Federal Highway Administration and VDOT both have spent a great deal of time analyzing every detail. So there's a wealth of research and other options that perhaps don't immediately spring to mind, and they've already done the legwork on it.
From my, from my perspective, and this is, this is a great discussion, and there are certainly problematic areas in the city. I just don't want us to go, well, every neighborhood needs this, because it's going to take away, if we start putting our resources on just traffic safety, then we're going to miss the things that I think would really improve the safety and viability of the neighborhoods, such as sidewalks, because you're going to spend it on this sort of stuff. I want to address the problems in the area as much as anybody does. I also want accountability of the driver. I want people in our city to recognize sometimes, and I, you know, one of the, the best calming methods that I saw was the $200 fine for speeding in a residential neighborhood. Okay? That is a traffic calmer, because when I see that sign, I certainly pay attention to it. I, I like that particular thing and I think that we, you know, our, our police force acts with good judgment when they're out there. So I think things like that are much cheaper and much more achievable. And the last thing I'll say is I like the 75%, because the cert, the last thing that we want to be dealing with is a neighborhood that's divided 50/50 on whether they want a change in their neighborhood. Okay? 75% is kind of a supermajority. And supermajorities are set up, we all serve on boards or commissions where a supermajority is required. I think it's required for us under certain conditions when we're doing certain things. And a supermajority puts that element of doubt out there and makes it easier for us to do things. I think the thing we've got to figure out is, let's say that the next neighborhood comes in and wants their speed limit lowered to 25 miles an hour. We've done a couple of these. I think we've done it based on the majority. Well, what does the majority mean? Does the majority mean one vote per household? Does it mean one vote per resident down there? What does 75% mean and how do you take that without just a petition? What I've found about petitions in the 20 or so years that I've been here, and we've all seen them, petitioner goes around, Pecoson is a great place to live. I think that's, that's one of our mantras, right? So if somebody, my neighbor brings me a petition, I'm not going to want to make them upset, I'm going to sign their petition. And then I'll call somebody and say, well, you know, I didn't really mean that, but they're such a nice person that that doesn't, that I just signed it. Okay? That, that, that puts us in a quandary here. And what I would ask is that we kind of have a process for what does it take? And what does 75% mean? I'm okay with every eligible voter on the street, you know, whatever it is, but something more that we get a petition that says they want to consider this, and then we go and do something formal to solidify it. And that's, that's kind of what I'd like to see us do. Because I've already, I'm sure we've all heard some rebuttal from the last one that we did, because there, that was a closely divided neighborhood on, on a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit. So what we want to do is make sure that we ask for a supermajority when we do things like this. So I think VDOT learned that same lesson. I think 75% was based on exactly what you said, a neighborhood put it in, then the other 50%, they got a couple swing voters, and VDOT found themselves in a quandary and said, oh, now we got to take it back out. So I want to make sure we don't fall into the same trap. And, and I don't care if it's 75% or 70%, you know, I'm just saying, something greater than 50, 55, 59, 51, something like that. I just don't like that situation.
You could establish procedures pretty easily on here's the procedures or, you know, doing that.
Right.
VDOT has the procedures laid out, so we can.
Do we have to adopt them or they state?
They are, we are supposed to, as Tom pointed out, follow VDOT procedures and we can certainly present them.
Probably a good idea for us to dust those things off and take a look at them and see if they meet our needs. But.
Likely they will.
Yeah.
My recollection, again in Spasylvania, is once there was a critical enough mass of petition or interest, the board of supervisors would then say, okay, this is worth investigating further. Our traffic plan, our transportation planner defined the neighborhood and then sent out, I think we did, postcards to each household with their return address on them so that we knew they had voted. And that's how we calculated it. It was one per, per property.
Right.
And we never had an instance where somebody called and said, yeah, my, my spouse wants to go this way, but I want to go that way. Chances are, they just didn't send the postcard in. Or the first one that saw the postcard did.
And they dealt with it in the house.
It wasn't perfect, but then when we would bring forward the final, we'd actually have a GIS map of the neighborhood and could show you each property that, that said yea or nay.
Yeah. Just, like I said, that's the one thing. And so it'd be the same thing, you know, I guess if you do this for, just to lower your speed limit, then the next thing would be a traffic calming solution. But let's make sure that we only engage on this where we truly have that issue and that the neighborhood is the one that says, we want this. Because I would rather spend my money on sidewalks. I would rather spend our money on the things that we know need to be done.
You know, an extra sign doesn't cost.
No, the $200 sign, if we want to adopt that policy, I think that's a policy, right?
Is that one that, though, that is effective? I mean, I was reading, some of this said that some signs are not effective, such as the.
I mean, I was reading, some of the said that some signs are not effective, such as children playing.
The $200 fine one's effective.
Are you getting ready to do that?
Actually about to talk about that, but yes, $200 fine would fall under the regulatory or enforcement type of sign, and those are effective because there is a consequence that can actually be enacted. There's also such a thing as advisory signs, and perhaps the most frequently requested is the watch children sign. Advisory signs get drivers' attention when they're first installed, but after a while, people are used to seeing them, and they're just kind of part of the landscape. And there's no real penalty for not watching children. So it's not an enforceable sign, it's just an advisory. And on top of that, there's the danger that you're actually inviting children to play in the street or encouraging behaviors that you don't necessarily want to behavior in the case of other signs. The final issue with those that we need to be really aware of is if you have too many signs cluttering your street, you're actually distracting your driver. So in general, a lot of traffic engineers, a lot of traffic organizations discourage the use of advisory signs in most instances for those reasons.
The last time we talked about this is just about a totally different council. With the extra fines in various areas, we said we didn't want to divide the city up like that and have $200 on this road and $100 on that road. That, that didn't, that wasn't a good idea at that time.
I think only, again, it goes back to the problem, neighborhoods, and that's why I think the policy of how they are identified, they identify to us, we follow this process, we're 75% of folks.
And there are certain roads that are longer and straighter and more tempting.
Right, because as we've all come to learn, the ones that we lower the speed limits on, and I think Chief Bowen will back me up, the people on the street end up with more of the tickets than the people from outside.
And more complaints about it.
Yes.
Gina, I will follow that up and let you know that I had quite a few comments from people who lived on Loma Street who reduced the speed limit on, saying, well, yeah, I signed that petition, but I really didn't want it, but I didn't want to make them mad.
One guy told me that his wife signed it, because she didn't want to make them mad.
So, look, and I, look, that's not a slam against our citizens, I get that. We certainly understand that.
We do it all the time.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, okay, that engages a process, and the process goes this way. And that way, you get an honest feeling for the neighborhood.
One thing that staff talked about that I do want to mention, and Percy had a lot to do with this as well. You know, we talked about what would be the criteria, just like what you said. And the number one thing we said was citizens' complaints. If you have so many, and you wanted to make, like, is it going to be one citizen, two citizens, three citizens? Had to be a good number of that. Even if they did, then the next thing would be having some supporting documentation, which would be crash data or speed data. And Percy said, that wouldn't be a problem. If we had X amount of complaints, and the manager or the council wanted us to set up our machine to check, you know, to document the speed, that would be something. And, you know, we all kind of wanted to try to take care of it basically in-house like that.
Well...
And then if it came to needing additional help or it continued, then... But that's, I just wanted you to know, that's kind of some of the things that we did talk about.
It sounds like we're all sort of on the same page. I think one of the best traffic calming things that we have is that sign. I saw it used during the seafood festival approach, it was on Little Florida Road. I'm assuming it's very, very functional, because it was sitting out there, I'm assuming it's functional. There really shouldn't be a week where that's not somewhere. And I know that's a chore on staff or anything else. Maybe we can even get the people from CERT to help us by moving that thing around. But I think that that is a, something that is mobile, that changes, that catches your attention. And I can't see a day where that should ever sit parked. It should be out somewhere in the city doing what it's supposed to do, which is bringing your attention to your speed in certain places. So that's my one recommendation of something we can do early. And like I said, I don't, y'all, this staff has so much on its plate. I hate to do that without saying, why don't we look at CERT or somebody like that setting it up for us?
With regard to speed in general, too, one of the issues that Percy raised was the fact that we have, a lot of our traffic issues that we studied were impacted by speeding. And that brought up, Percy brought up the issue of habitual speeders. Sometimes it's not as much everybody is speeding down a particular road as it is there are one or two individuals that might speed all the time down those roads. So we also talked about perhaps developing an easier way to report that or also just educate the public that they can, they can talk to the police department. They can call, and if, say, somebody is habitually speeding at a certain time, you know, on a regular basis, they can let the police department know, and they'll be glad to set up radar and, you know, maybe give some incentive to slowing down perhaps, so.
Ellen, we have about five minutes to roll through the rest of your work session.
Okay. Cities-wide speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour. You have the data sheet that's available to the public. The concern with that is that you can use reductions in speed limit to kind of raise driver awareness, and if it's citywide, you may lose that.
You've already got a consensus, a council, that's not where we're going.
All right.
We're going to, I'd rather increase it on some...
Remember, any time you reduce the speed limit to 25 miles an hour with the golf cart ordinance, you're allowing golf carts on that road. So if you think about doing that on a particular road, consider the golf cart safety as well. A flashing light or flashing stop sign at Cedar and Little Florida Road, we've kind of been over that issue. There are ways to improve that intersection, and we'll just keep looking at it.
Doing what you're doing there. And look for other things, and certain replacement of signs is a big one.
That would be one area where the city staff recommends maybe considering a lowered speed limit, not 25 miles an hour, because once again, deep ditches, no shoulders, you don't want golf carts there. Perhaps that would be a zone where you would consider 30 miles an hour, but there's probably needs to be more engineering study and work done on that issue. Traffic light configuration at Yorktown Road. There have been times when people have reported they have sat there for long periods of time in the late evening hours. There was a time in the past where the actuator wiring was broken, so there were periods where people waited too long. We did research, a flashing mode. Basically, if the traffic signal is actuated, you're giving people on the side... Or VDOT says that you shouldn't have, flashing operations shall not occur at actuated traffic signal installations. So you're going to have to look at how that traffic light operates during the course of the day as well.
You talking with Creek, Little Florida, Victory?
The Yorktown intersection.
Yorktown Road intersection.
You mean, it must be at some type of crossroads, because other than that, how does, I mean, we all go to Newport News, you travel Warwick Boulevard, it's nothing but flashing yellows.
It is, all the way in...
All the way.
...C and Y, all the way down.
We can do more research at that and find out why, what the thinking is there, and see if there are more possibilities.
But remember, also that a flashing light is flashing in the neighbor's windows 24/7, or at night when you're trying to sleep. And sometimes, that's a little different than a changing light. Flashing red in your window all night long, and I remember...
I think any time you've got a light that during the day, it operates as a normal traffic signal. And then at night, sometime you're going to change it to a flashing light, you're making a big mistake. Especially where there's a left turn lane signal. You're just asking for trouble.
Well, they do it all over the country. Warwick is a really good example.
Yeah, I know they do, because I had a room, I had a classmate that was killed in Alabama because of that.
That study that they did out in, where was it, Texas A&amp;M, I guess, was the same as our transportation center did that. They had like two, they did two intersections and concluded nothing. If you go back and reread that study.
Well, if you're, if you're doing that, all I'm saying is that if you start doing that, you need to cone those lights so that it's not broadcasting everywhere.
If you're in that big of a hurry at midnight, maybe you need a police escort.
I was going to mention, if we're talking about the intersections, the, I don't know if we have the ability to reprogram at night. It seems to me that the Victory, Little Florida, With Creek light, during mornings, it goes with Creek is the major traffic. But in the evenings, after, after work time, not during rush hour, but at night, I see more traffic coming in on Victory. So that's something that I don't know if we've ever looked at that, but I think that the timing on that could be looked at and adjusted at least, but...
We've talked about getting a study there, if there's money available to really analyze the patterns in the traffic.
What does actuating mean?
It means you come up and you stop, and it sense there, the wiring is...
It senses it.
Yeah, you trigger the light by pulling up over the actuator wiring that's been embedded in the concrete, basically, as opposed to a light that's timed constantly.
In angle accidents or like that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just take, before we break, just take a moment to express our appreciation to our friends in the city of Hampton. You may not be aware of this, but almost all of the work that's done testing traffic lights at intersections and programming and checking, make sure the timing is right, et cetera, is done by the city of Hampton. And they are, they're great neighbors to us, and very seldom do we ever see, do we ever see a resource request coming back following our request.
I agree, and they've been very, let me go one step further and thank them for listening to us about the street light at the steam plant. For years, that was, that can be a real problematic intersection for our citizens. And they have really listened to us where that's, where the operation of that light, because it could definitely be more beneficial for their truck drivers than our citizens. So we certainly appreciate our neighbors on that. Okay.
One thing that Ellen mentioned, the fact that it's not so much continuously speeding in these neighborhoods, but it's a few repeat offenders. I wonder if we could look into with our sign if it's possible that they actually take a picture of the vehicle if it's speeding. I mean, not to use it to write them a ticket, but we could sure pick up on who's repeating the offense.
Go knock on the door. Just go knock on the door and tell them, yeah, we got your number.
Well, look at here.
I know there's equipment that does that.
We have that equipment? But in the town of Warrenton, when I used to live there, they certainly had that.
Know somebody who does.
Supposedly.
Okay.
Valid point.
Well, then we'll move on to the, to the regular meeting based on that note. Thanks.